Welcome to Centerfield City School's school board meeting on November 18. We are going to do the Pledge of Allegiance and I'm going to ask Mr. Kennedy Rodas Diaz to please lead us off with the Pledge of Allegiance. Do you want to stand? Whenever you're ready.
My pleasure.
allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice in
Thank you, Kennedy. I also wanted to say if there are translations needed online or in the room, we do have translation available so please just let us know by raising your hand. And I wanted to, during closed session, I just have two reportable action items. Item three, one special education conference with legal counsel anticipation litigation significant voter to litigation pursuant of government code section five four nine five six nine number. A potential case one was moved by trustee De Naver Marsh, second by trustee Lau, all were in favor in that pass. Number, a potential case one was moved by trustee De Naver Marsh, second by trustee Lau, all were in favor in that pass. The second item that passed was Student Services Government Code Section 489001 and 48900, consideration of a student expulsion case 2561. And that was moved by trustee Kerner, second by trustee De Naver Marsh, all board members were in favor, that also passed. Those were the two reportable items during closed session. And now we have a very exciting moment where, I'm sorry. Oh, I need an approval of the agenda before we go into our exciting item, do I have a?
And staff would like to make some changes, for example, under consent, item number 14 is also listed under discussion and action. So we'd like to remove altogether item number 14, consent will be discussed under discussion and action. And item number 21, we would like to follow under consent and vote on it separately as we have a current city board member who is on the YMCA Advisory Board and would like to read.
Okay, thank you, and thank you for recusing yourself, and also you shared that Coleman Elementary will be moved to. That's it, Coleman, the Coleman presentation will be moved to the next. December 16th, yes, yes, thank you, thank you. Okay, thank you for that, do I have an approval of the agenda with those changes?
Motion to approve agenda with these stipulated changes.
All right, moved by trustee De Naver Marsh, do I have a second?
A second motion.
Second by trustee Kerner, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, the agenda is approved. And now I have the exciting opportunity to have the swearing in of our new board member for trustee Area Five, Kennedy Rotos Diaz and Lindsay Laura. Yes, right? Yes.
Right here?
It's good.
Yep. Perfect, go ahead and raise your right hand and you're gonna repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Kennedy Rotos.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations.
Yeah!
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Right.
Daddy!
Yeah.
Yeah, we should do a group photo, yeah, that's a great idea.
Let me go back this way, a little bit right in front. The podium for the second time today?
I'll take pictures first. Okay, one, two, three.
All right, here we go.
One more.
Congratulations! And you got a big old mic.
My name is.
Now, thank you. Thank you. Bye! And now don't, now I'm going to welcome our Davidson Old School Amelia, did I say that right? Say, Amelie? Bloomin, okay, Amelie Bloomin, can you please come up here, we're going to swear you in now. So, all right, you have to raise your right hand, you wanna come closer a little? Okay, all right, do you solemnly swear and affirm that you will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies? Foreign and domestic, that you will wear, you will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California? That you will take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion and that you will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which you're about to enter? All right, well, welcome.
Welcome!
Welcome.
Welcome!
Yeah.
Welcome.
Yeah. Let's find out. And you stay around for the updates. Okay, now we're back in business, okay, all right.
Here we go.
All right. Yes.
So, we had a student speaker, the student body, I believe, president from Santa Claus High, his name was Azim Munchi. And Azim brought to the district's attention that in our resolution of complaints to Centerfield City Schools serving needs at each and every student through ongoing recognition wears that we forgot two significant months. It was Muslim Heritage Month and Arab American Heritage Month, to which we have since added to the list of resolutions. So, staff is here tonight to ask the board to approve these additions to our resolutions, so we can celebrate these two very significant holidays during the course of our school year. So, motion.
I, welcome for any comments, motions, or approval.
A motion to approve.
Second. Okay, moved by trustee Lau, second by trustee De Naver Marsh, all those in favor say aye.
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 Okay, that motion passes. And I believe now we go into presentations.
Yes, so we have our Executive Director of Heads Up, Miss Michelle Moetti, who is going to inform and the public an update of the foundation's programs.
Hi, thank you.
Hi!
Thank you, Christina.
Bear down, my husband would say, bear down. Cause I saw your gear at Sports Basement this week and.
Oh, yeah.
My husband is very proud.
Thank you. And, sorry, Alicia Malley Klein, who is our board president, is on her way, she is going to present the last couple of slides, so, sorry. We were, we were planning on 7:15 on the agenda today, so she's coming from the city after watching her grandchildren. But I am gonna go ahead and get started, and also with me tonight is our Operations Manager, Tracy Peck Holcomb. So, thank you, we're really excited to be here, we like to just come once a year and do presentation, give you an update, talk about the programs we're funding and, and any other exciting news. But tonight, I wanted to start with, we had our Heads Up Board Retreat last week, so we get together once a year, one of our meetings is more of a strategic meeting. And we think about, you know, looking three to five years out, similar to Together 2024. And in fact, we, we put up the Together 2024 poster to just kind of ground ourselves in, in what the focus of the district is and how we fit in and align with the strategic plan of the district. But we also, like, we realize that right now, we're, we feel like we are in a time as the Heads Up Board that we need to be more tactical in, in our thinking. And so we sort of approached this retreat with that in mind. We always open up our retreat with, with something to tie everyone to the mission, but we did something a little different this year. We asked all of our board members to share a memory from when they were in school. It could be elementary, middle, or high school, but something from when they were a kid that has stayed with them all this time. And our, you know, our board is made up of people from all over, there's people from Marin, there's people from out of state, we even have board members from out of the country. That went to school out of the country, so the stories were really interesting to hear. What surfaced were powerful themes that mirror exactly what Heads Up strives to support in our schools. Belonging and inclusion, teachers whose impact lasts decades, support through emotionally difficult times, encouragement when challenges felt, challenges felt overwhelming. The joy and confidence built through the arts and the strength found in community and parent involvement. It was a reminder that when we invest in our students, we're not just funding programs, we're shaping experiences that stay with them for their entire life. And sorry, I'm gonna go to the, there we go, that's a picture of us at our, at our retreat. So we also spent time acknowledging the realities that our district is facing and, and acknowledging that as the foundation for the school, we can't solve the budget deficit that is facing our district. But what we can do and what we are committed to doing is continuing to deliver consistent, dependable funding for the programs that anchor students' wellbeing and their sense of possibility. Our commitment remains clear, we will sustain and deepen our investment in the arts and in mental health and wellness, because while academics are essential, arts and wellness are what hold everything together. They're what helps students feel safe, seen, and ready to learn. So with that in mind, I'm going to review the programs that we are funding and give updates for the school year. So starting in elementary school and our elementary arts enrichment, just top line overview, 24 weeks of performing arts instruction for every TK through fifth grade student. This is a partnership and all partners contribute financially, which includes Heads Up, Youth and Arts, our PTOs and PTA's, and the district, all using an equity funding model. And we're in year four of this partnership. So, we want to really frame the success of this program and see where we're going, heading forward. So, our partnership with Youth and Arts continues to involve in ways that directly benefit students. This year, Youth and Arts pivoted from primarily visual arts to 100% performing arts, so this is music and dance. Giving all seven elementary schools and the Early Learning Center a richer, more balanced arts experience. Visual arts is being provided by the district using the Prop 28 funds. We also made major progress on equity, every elementary school is receiving the same level of arts access, regardless of parent fundraising capacity. Because of our investment and the efficiencies created with Youth and Arts, we were able to reduce the PTO and PTA contributions this year on average 29% per school. Sites are spending less and getting more, especially when Prop 28 dollars are layered in for arts. All arts instruction is aligned with national standards and Youth and Arts provides deep professional development for every teaching artist working in SRCS. They host two professional development sessions each year focused on classroom management, universal design for learning, differentiation across grade levels, and ways to incorporate multiple modalities which could include audio, video, or visual to support all learners. Every teacher, teaching artist is observed twice per year, sorry, twice per semester by Youth and Arts core staff, creating real feedback loops with classroom teachers. This helps ensure quality and consistency across all campuses. Looking ahead, Youth and Arts is launching an impact study that will help us better understand how arts programming influences students' social emotional development. Their confidence, resilience, creativity, and self-expression. And for fifth grade students, whether arts exposure is influencing the electives they choose when they move on to middle school. Finally, it's important to note that SRCS is becoming a model district for Prop 28 implementation. While many districts across California are still struggling with rollout, we are demonstrating what it looks like to do this well. Thoughtful planning, clear use of funds, and alignment with existing programs. Stephanie Close gave an excellent overview of this at the Arts Now Marin event two weeks ago. It reaffirmed that SRCS is ahead of the curve. And I really want to acknowledge the work of Stephanie and Bob and his entire team in the business office to really pull this together. It does not look like this in other districts, they are struggling with how to do their Prop 28 funds. We're doing it well and we've become a case study, not just in Marin, but for the state, so, so thank you, Bob and your team. These successes, equity, access, quality, and consistency are exactly the areas that Heads Up is committed to sustaining and strengthening as we look ahead. Arts and wellness aren't extras, they're what hold the academic experience together and help students feel joyful, supported, and ready to learn. So, moving on to wellness. Students, teachers, and parents continue to identify wellness as one of the most urgent needs for students. Heads Up plays an important role in filling gaps and strengthening the supports that help students feel safe, grounded, and connected on campus. We fund the supplies and materials that keep the wellness centers at Davidson, Terralinda, and Centerfield Medrone functioning as welcoming, supportive spaces. We also funded the Digital Citizenship Week at Terralinda and Centerfield High School a couple weeks ago, helping students navigate technology, social media, and online safety in healthier ways, bringing more self-awareness to their usage. A major contribution again this year is our funding of two wellness associates, one at Terralinda and one at Centerfield High School. These positions are essential and are often the first point of contact for students seeking help, guidance, or simply a safe adult relationship on campus. We know these supports matter and demand is only increasing. As a foundation, we're committed to growing our investment in wellness, so we can continue funding these positions and ideally expand them. Our goal is to provide stable, ongoing resources for the staff who make a daily difference in our students' lives. Just as with the arts, wellness is foundational to learning. When students feel supported emotionally, they're able to engage academically. This remains one of our core priorities going forward. And finally, high school college consultants. College access is a critical pathway for equity and opportunity. Through Heads Up funding, students at Centerfield High School and Terralinda High School receive the kind of individualized guidance usually only available through expensive private consultants. Our two college consultants provide end-to-end support, helping students identify schools, complete applications, write essays, navigate FAFSA, and find scholarships. They also host college visits and organize outreach for juniors and seniors, including nights designed to engage parents in the process. Each consultant serves roughly 140 students per year, meaning hundreds of students gain access to tailored guidance that can significantly influence their college and career trajectory. To put it in perspective, private services like these typically cost four to $6,000 per student. By funding these positions through Heads Up, we're leveling the playing field and ensuring every student has access to these critical supports regardless of family resources. The programming exemplifies how strategic funding can make a real tangible difference in students' lives, complementing academics and building long-term opportunity. All right, and finally, our mini grant program through Donors Choose. So this will, is currently active, teachers are putting up projects and requests for mini grants, and on Giving Tuesday, we will be funding projects through Donors Choose. And the reason we do it through Donors Choose is, is a few different reasons. One, just from an administrative standpoint, it really, it lifts the burden off of Heads Up to administer and manage all the grants. But two, Donors Choose often has donor matches. This year on Giving Tuesday, every donation made will be matched 100%. So our $25,000 will turn into a $50,000 investment, and that does not include additional donations that come from community and members on, from all across the state. It's really interesting sometimes to look at who donates to the projects, they're, they're, they're not necessarily the parents in our district, we're, we're getting, we're tapping new funding sources, which is what really makes it exciting. Last year, we funded 68 projects, our $25,000 investment resulted in $40,000 in projects last year. And this year, again, we have, outside of the Donors Choose platform, we're, we have a pool of $5,000 to support field trips. So teachers can request up to $500 towards field trips, mostly this goes to cover transportation and buses is what we're finding, finding those requests. But we're really excited to be able to offer those opportunities to, to some of our schools that haven't been able to go on many field trips. All right, here's the, probably should have led with this, but. So we had the Schools Rule Distribution Event a couple weeks ago, and we received $291,421. Largest distribution to date to Heads Up. Just to put that in perspective, pre-COVID 2019, this year Schools Rule distributed a total of about $913,000, I think it was. Pre-COVID 2019, their biggest. Pre-COVID 2019, their biggest distribution ever was $1 million, excuse me, $1 million. That year, Heads Up received about $168,000. Last year, Schools Rule moved to an equity funding model. And you can see how that is really, just flipped the page for us. It's, it's really impactful and making a difference. And so, so when I reach out and say, hey, we've got a Schools Rule event, or hey, it's the Distribution Event, if you have to prioritize what you go to, put this at the top of your list. Because this is more than 50% of our, of our fundraising. And thank you to all of you that do, that do come and do show up. I know you've all, all been there before. So, one of, one of the things I wanted to point to, so you're 14-year history, and every year it's gone up. We've received to date over $2 million from Schools Rule. But the sustained, the sustained partnership is really providing a consistent resource that allows us to think beyond year-to-year funding and plan for deeper, longer-term impact. So, we're looking at this partnership, and it's countywide. It's every, it's every district foundation in Marin County. And everyone's bought into this concept. And it's, so it's not just a check. It's not just a check coming to San Rafael. It's, it's a powerful statement about what the community and the county value. It's equity, it's access, and it's consistent support for programs that make a difference in students' lives every day. Alright. Talk for a minute about numbers. This is the school, this is our budget for this year. So, something to note, we have always budgeted and raised money in the same year that we budgeted for. So, we've, we set this budget in May for programs based on what we think we're gonna raise this year. And at that time, we don't know what we're getting from Schools Rule. We don't know if it's gonna rain at Carnival. Like, we, we just don't know. We have to kind of like wave our finger in the air and predict. So in May, we, we budgeted conservatively at $422,000 for programming. And you can just see how, how that breaks down. $210,000 is going to the Youth and Arts program. That's only our portion of the contribution. That total program is about $400,000. And that's where the partnership comes in. At the middle school, we're funding wellness and some enrichment programs after school, $20,000 there. High school, $80,000 for our two college consultants. $80,000 in total for wellness. That includes the two associates plus the supplies and materials. We fund Madron's project-based learning, a project that happens at the end of the school year, and then $30,000 towards mini grants. So that's how we get to the $422,000 in programming. This is our income sources. This is updated with our Schools Rule money. So you can see that number of 538,421. So, we weren't working with that high of a number when we did our budget. So, so what we do as a board is we'll, we'll talk about, you know, we have some additional funding. Where are we gonna push that to? This year, to make impact with those dollars, but also talk about, you know, what are, what are some longer-term things that we can do with this money? We, we took some money last year that we had available and put it into, into a high-interest earning CD. So trying, finding ways to leverage the money until we figure out how we're gonna disperse the money as well, and being, being as responsible as we can. Alright, so I'm so excited about our end-of-year campaign this year. We are doing a theme of Rooted in San Rafael. So this will kick off on Giving Tuesday. We again have our very generous business partners, the Dutra Group and Meritas Wealth Management, doing $5,000 each. So we have a total of $10,000 matching. Every donation made gets matched up to $10,000. And we're focusing on our teachers and staff this year who went to San Rafael schools as children and now work in our district. And.
The poster child.
I think, Mr. Rotis Dias, I think we can reach out to you now as well. So, it has, it has been so fun collecting people's stories and photos and just like creating such joy. This is just an example. This is Ms. Erica Smith from San Rafael High School. She's a Spanish teacher. It's her, this is her, I think she said her fifth grade photo from Glenwood Elementary School. But each, each of sharing several quotes and memories they have from elementary school. And what I love, this was totally unintentional, but it ties back into the, to the exercise we did at our board retreat. And just digging back into your own childhood and what stood out for you in school. So I'll challenge you all to just kind of think of that on your own and think about how that plays out for our kids now. So, so again, that's, that is all launching on Giving Tuesday. Make sure you're following our social media, Facebook, Instagram, whatever, whatever you do. We will be sending parent squares out and highlighting all these amazing people that work in our district. And I think that is all the talking that I'm gonna do, and I'm gonna pass it to our president, Alicia Nolay-Fine, to talk about some upcoming events.
Hi, sorry that I was a little bit late. Guys got to this quickly after your closed session, so. Some upcoming events. Everybody knows about Carnival. Every year we have it. Hopefully it won't rain, April 25th this year. It was very, very beneficial that we had it at San Rafael High School because everybody went into the student commons and took shelter there, except the brave folks who wanted to be in the rain. But it was a nice way for everybody to say, wow, look at this space. Look at how beautiful the, the schools are. And what, what our young kids have to look forward to as they progress. So that's great. The book talk with Elaine Petracelli, this kind of goes to the next piece, ties to the next piece, which is about our business sponsors. This is our 19th year that we've been doing a luncheon and a book talk at the Book Passage. Many of you may know that, you know, Elaine Petracelli and the Book Passage are one of the premier independent booksellers in the nation, not just the Bay Area or the state. And she has that entire time been very supportive of public schools. And she's very supportive of our foundation because it's, it touches all the schools, right? And it's a fun day. It's also something that ties us to community members, former parents. For, a lot of former board members come. Sometimes Jenny Callaway comes, Michael Lawrence Gulati, Linda Jackson before she moved. So it's a good event for people who have a long history with the district as well as younger folks. Emily Bush brings her mom and her mom's friends. So it's a fun day. If anybody likes reading and likes books, can encourage that. The, like I said, this sort of ties to our business sponsors. You know, without these sponsors, we would be in a much weaker position. And it's not just some of the premier sponsors like Dutra and Meritas that help us do the, the match every year, but it's, it's businesses in the community standing with the schools. So again, it's not just about the money, just like with Schools Rule. It's signaling. And this is an area we really want to build. Like, a few of these names have been on this list for a long time. And we haven't been really able to grow the list and, as much as we might like. And that transitions a bit to this next slide. So what can the board do to help? So, you know, Michelleene and I have been around quite a while. I've been around quite, quite a while. But since Jim Hoagaboom and then carried on with Carmen and Bob, the partnership between our foundation and the district administration is very strong. And they are very supportive and they carry our message. The principals really understand. And so that part of the partnership is really strong. To take this to the next level, and what do I mean by the next level? The next level is to have us be similar to every other foundation in the county. So, our peer organizations that we are, that we work together with in Schools Rule, every single one of them in every other community is the primary fundraising entity for the schools. And the PTAs and PTOs are just doing things at the margins for their particular site. You know, plants for a garden, you know, a few supplies for teachers. But everybody is very clear that the fundraising is on the foundation. And we can't really get to the next level until we have that mindset in this district. There are other districts that have socioeconomic disparities between the people that attend, the families that attend their schools, like Navado, and they have achieved it. So, there's no reason why we shouldn't be able to achieve it. But it takes board support to achieve that. So, we would really like to enter into a phase of greater partnership with you all. And so what are the things that would be the look-for's in that, to use sort of education language? Know what we do. Like, when somebody says, oh, your foundation, what do they fund? Know that we fund enrichment and wellness centers and college counseling and mini grants. Just know that. Be able to answer that question. Be able to answer the question, well, why is there a foundation when the PTAs and PTOs exist? Because the foundation is working on behalf of every student in the district, just like you are, just like you are, right? We're the other entity that mirrors you. And I guess the, the next thing I would say is, you know, demonstrate your support. Follow on social media. Make a donation of any size. Doesn't matter. It's the participation each year. Bring other people to the, to the table. Talk about us. You know, many of us have friends and neighbors that, whose kids are older, whose kids attend private schools. But having strong schools in a community is important for everyone, whether or not their kids attend. And helping to spread that message and letting folks know that we're the organization that is trying to do that is, is really important and, and powerful. And then I would just say, each of you are in a different district. And to the extent that you can encourage the constituents in your district to understand the role of Heads Up, to embrace this concept of district-wide support and not just narrow focus on their own child at their own school. Because if you, if you, if we all think about district-wide focus, it improves for every child at every site. So, that's the pitch, and I hope that you will partner with us in a deeper way going forward in the next several years of your tenure. So, thanks for listening tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Any questions? We're happy to answer any questions.
So, our new trustee, Rotis Dias, no pressure. Usually, the newest goes first for any questions or comments, but if you just wanna listen to trustee Lau or trustee DeNava Marsh, or you can listen, and then if you have other thoughts, you can jump in.
I think I'll observe for this one.
Okay, great. Trustee Lau, any comments?
First of all, I want to thank you, both of you again, and to be here and, and the wonderful presentation. I think the education definitely helped us to be, be able to be your ambassador to help with the message. I attend your meeting as well, and, and I, I know that you have made a lot of effort, including the graph. I think that you made a chart to try to educate.
When you've already made suggestions, like you stepped right in this year, and you've already made suggestions for business sponsors and grants, so that, we really appreciate that. That's, that's what partnership looks like. So that's great.
Yeah, good, good, good to know. So, but yeah, so thank you for, for doing all those things. So, and also congratulation on the, receiving the, the significant donation from School Woo. So we're, we're proud of all the accomplishment and the recognition. And also, I'm glad to hear the retreat went well. And I know, I heard about the retreat. Looking forward to it. But really fought your thoughtful, very strategic conversation. Really love to hear that everyone's telling their story about what impacted the most and then what they want to bring and share with, with the district. So, I think that, that is, is very special to, to hear. I, I, you know, I think, I think I also learned, I don't know, I, I know you didn't mention it in, in your presentation, or maybe somehow it's included. But I also want to congratulate you, the recent recipient of the grant from the county. The community grants. I know the application was 40, and usually they don't fund the full amount, but you get $20,000 from the county. I think it's very significant achievement, because our 177, only 94 was funded, and you're one of the 94. So congratulate, congratulations again for that achievement.
They believe, it shows that they believe in the work we're doing. They believe the way we're trying to create opportunities across the district that are equitable, so that when kids come together at middle and high school, they've had similar experiences. And then, of course, the college access piece, I think, is very powerful for people.
Yeah, so that means they believe in the wellness program that you're promoting, also the Carnival, because I know those are the areas they are funding for us. So, looking forward to the Carnival this year, and congratulations again.
Thank you, trustee Lau. Trustee DeNava Marsh, anything to?
You know I'm a big fan.
I know.
You know, I'm a cheerleader. I'm an ambassador for Heads Up. I'm probably have like a Heads Up tattoo somewhere on my body. But what's really exciting is that all of us can give and contribute, time, talent, and treasure. So however we can and give, and with the equity funding model that has been implemented, it's so amazing because regionally, we are seeing like our other neighboring counties, like Sonoma County, leveraging our model and making it right-sized for their community. And I feel that that's a really exciting moment in time. But more so, that Rooted in San Rafael campaign just really speaks to me, especially with the success of our alder cohorts, seeing how many of our students are homegrown and then coming back. You're also capturing our school district history. And it goes back to your comment earlier and your suggestion in your board interview about how can we leverage our San Rafael City School alumni network? And these stories can be dovetailed to, be two birds with one seed. We can leverage both and. So, I just want to say thank you for the work that you and your entire team. But also want to note that on your Heads Up Foundation Board, you also have student representatives because every decision is rooted with students at the center. So I just wanted to say, like, it's not just adults in the room. It's leveraging healthy student-adult partnerships and really working in partnerships. So I just wanted to also highlight that, for like the brief moment I served under Heads Up.
You absorbed a lot. That's really great. And it's Michelleene and Tracy thought of this Rooted in San Rafael campaign, so I think it's really exciting. And we were amazed when we got the list from Christina of how many there are. Like, I was like, oh, I can name four at San Rafael High off the top of my head, but there are like 100, and I don't know, maybe there are 80, like, there are a lot. So.
Yeah, oh, thank you.
And I just, thank you for mentioning our student board members. I, I, there was a lot to include. I was trying not to get it too long. But both of our student board members, we have nominated for Heart of Marin Awards Student Volunteer of the Year. So just want to mention that. That event's in January, and we're really excited to celebrate both of them.
Awesome. Thank you, trustee DeNava Marsh. Trustee Carter?
Thank you very much. And also mainly for the reminder of exactly the services that you do provide. And that helps us to be ambassadors for you. It's like, when I see what you're doing across, you know, being able to provide this to all the schools, that's where I wish we, this is when I wish we had a countywide school district. Because we would, the ability to be able to flatten that across all of the districts would be amazing. But thank you for the work that you're doing.
Thank you, trustee Carter. I was just gonna say, I really appreciate, you said it yourself, and you said, what can we do? Like, we can't take on the budget or other big challenges, but what can we do to really inspire students? So I really appreciate that's at the forefront of what you do. And I think one of the things that I, I know my colleague, my trustees know, that sometimes there's a field trip that one of the school goes to, but another school doesn't go to. So maybe one day we'll envision this world of field trips where all kids get the same experience. So I love your Rooted in San Rafael because I, I see something that one school's going to. I'm like, how do we get all of our schools to have that joy? So thank you for all the hard work that you're doing and being rooted in San Rafael. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Alright.
Thank you so much.
Okay, and we will have student announcements in just one minute. We just have student services, ESD, presentation approval of the children, and youth behavioral health initiatives. Oh, great. And free, or is it fee-scheduled program? Thank you.
Alright, well, I'm so excited to introduce our two speakers tonight, so thank you for this opportunity. We have Dr. Lisa Miller, who is the Assistant Superintendent of Marin County Schools, along with Mr. Scott Ostendorf, who's the Project Director of Health, Safety, and Support for MCOE. Both of them, stand up with me. Both of them have been incredible leaders with trying to figure out the best way to create a sustainable funding model for all of our social emotional supports for students, like remarkable leaders. So not only have they gone out and found our federal grant that we're currently using, but they have also researched and attended numerous meetings throughout California to learn more about the fee schedule billing model. And they have been meeting with me and, and Bob and Darlene. Weekly have a meeting tomorrow morning with Scott to talk about how to put this together. And that's what they'll be talking about tonight, is the what, the why, and the how we are going to move forward and do that. So, we will let them take the presentation from. we are going to move forward and do that, so we will let them take the presentation from.
Good evening, trustees, superintendent, and cabinet, um, thank you so much for having us, thank you, Susan. Um, so I'm gonna really, we're gonna really try and and not confuse you with a bunch of acronyms. The primary one is CYBHI. That is a statewide initiative, um, and it is the Children and Youth Behavioral Health Initiative. Um, and it actually launched by Governor Newsom in August twenty twenty-two. There were twenty strategies within CYBHI. Tonight, we're talking about just one of those strategies, and it's the one that's meant to um stay on in perpetuity from this um broader initiative of CYBHI. So next, great. Um, so our outline, it'll be brief, we're hoping to be up here, um, you know, ten minutes or so or less, but enough time to give you uh to answer questions. Why uh was this CYBHE- CYBHI launched? What is it? And then how? Um, and then we'll give you a brief update on the status of it, and then if you have any questions. So the next slide, please. So why? Many of you know, in fact, you, the prior presentation spoke a little bit to this too. We're all aware and the youth mental health crisis that um exists for a variety of reasons. So we wanted to cite just a little bit of research behind that, um, because it isn't just anecdotal, or gosh, this is what I'm sensing. It actually has been proven that we're in a mental health crisis of youth by multiple entities, such as the Centers for Disease Control, American Psychological Association, and the National Survey of Children's Health Data. So just a few I'm gonna highlight, under the first one, twenty percent of students seriously considered attempting suicide in twenty twenty-three. That's one in five, that's alarming. Uh, under the APA, between the years twenty sixteen to twenty twenty-two, there was an increase of a hundred and twenty-four percent of youth um being hospitalized for mental health needs. Um, we could go on and on, it's almost in the news every day around um what our youth are needing for their wellness. Um, next slide, please. So knowing that data and what the date, the trend of the data and the direction it was going, Governor Newsom and our legislators said, we need to do something about this. Um, we have structures in place to try to meet the needs of our youth, but it's not working. Um, so we want to be revolutionary in our state and look to see if there's a way we can try to address this challenge. And schools were looked at primarily as a way to fill the gap of mental health service delivery. Uh, specifically, it's hard for students to get to clinics, whether that's transportation, needing time out of school. Um, the clinic may not have a therapist available, there's a lot of complexities to get people to therapy. Um, any of us that go through it ourselves know that it's it's not an easy pursuit. And so we knew that um services were not being rendered because students couldn't access them. Well, we know students are in school, maybe we need to change it and bring the services to the schools, which many of your school sites already have through wellness centers. Um, so we, the governor really wanted to break down that silo effect. In order for schools to do this, though, we need funding. You can't hire staff and put in place wellness centers or wellness services without being able to fund those position, fund the materials, fund the space. Um, as much as districts have the obligation and the responsibility to do this, there is no earmarked funding from the state or the federal government for mental health in schools. That's not a, that's not in any um calculation with the government. So what our governor said is, let's try to find a funding source to have mental health in schools, and that is the CYBHI fee schedule. Um, again, that's one of the twenty strategies, and it's really the most important one from this broader initiative of the governor. All right, I think you might be out.
Thank you, Lisa. So how are we going to do this? It's been a big endeavor. Uh, the first cohort of schools that started implementing the fee schedule started in January of two thousand twenty-four, forty-six schools across California, and I should say that California is the only state in the country that has attempted to endeavor this, okay? Um, so as Lisa mentioned, this is legislated in law in California that Medi-Cal, disability insurance, and commercial insurance plans are now required by law to reimburse school districts for certain services that are provided in schools by school district personnel for general education, behavioral health, or mental health services, okay? Uh, special education services are exempt from this fee schedule, so we're not able to seek reimbursement for those services. We do participate in a different program for reimbursement for special ed services through Medi-Cal, but otherwise that is exempt from this program. So one of the nice things about the way this was set up is that a fee schedule or a rate system is already established. So we do not then need to enter into contracts or negotiate fees with insurance companies. It has already been established, there are approximately fifty codes on the fee schedule that cross over four different categories of assessment, psychoeducation, treatment or counseling, as well as case management. It already dictates who's eligible to provide the services and with who are the eligible providers for whose services can be reimbursed. So for example, in San Rafael, that would be school counselors, school psychologists, nurses, um drug and alcohol counselors, licensed marriage and family therapists, and other staff that you already employ and who are already providing these services but have not yet had a, have had an opportunity to seek reimbursement for those services. How we're going to do this, it's gonna be a lot of training for school staff. So tomorrow, Susan and I are doing our first training, you are the pilot district in the county to do this. We'll be doing our first training tomorrow with your elementary and middle school counselors. Um, so congratulations for that.
Exciting.
We started talking about this.
A year and a half ago.
A year and a half ago.
We're here, we're here.
We're here, we're here. Um, this is gonna take some really important communication, though, to parents and caregivers as well. So we will be working on, working very closely with your district on a communication strategy, doing that throughout spring semester. Um, it also is gonna require a lot of work to um develop and implement procedures to obtain consent from parents for billing. Because not only do we need consent from the parent in order to bill or to submit those insurance claims, we also have to collect insurance information, which we are not used to doing in public schools. Because we do need to include that when we submit claims. Um, we're already providing services to youth, but this gives us an opportunity to analyze the services that we're providing and make sure that we're providing services, not that are billable, because that's not necessarily our goal, but that are effective and that we can seek reimbursement when that is allowable. And then, of course, our goal here is to seek claims to the mass, maximum extent possible as well. Yeah. So um every week I attend a meeting that is represented by many districts across the state, and they provide us an update of how is this program working across the state. So what I show you here is a monthly breakdown of claims that are already happening across the state. So this is as of uh November fourth, um fifty-six school districts or institutes of higher education, because this program is also available for students up to age twenty-six. So universities and community colleges are also able to participate and seek reimbursement. Um, it also is available to what we call school-linked providers, so if there's a provider in your community, a community clinic, if the school designates them as a as a designated provider, they can also participate. So there are fifty-six school districts and providing, two point two five million dollars worth of claims have been submitted, and of that, two point two million have been reimbursed. So there's been two point two million dollars worth of clean claims, as you might call them, that have been paid back out to school districts. Over five thousand six hundred seventy students, um, that represents services that have been provided to over five thousand six hundred students, and that represents thirty-three different insurance companies that are included in that data set. So where are we here in Marin County? So the Marin County Office of Education serves as the billing consortium hub or the lead for that. Um, currently, we are participating at the county office, Nevada Unified is also a member, and of course, San Rafael City Schools as well is a member of that consortium. Uh, the school staff, I've already gone through this before, but it's mostly your school counselors, social workers, psychologists, any licensed staff, registered credential nurses, certified wellness coaches, you may have never heard of this job before. This is a new position in California, it is a certified position through a state department called Healthcare Access and Information. It is a associate or bachelor's level position that provides um subclinical social emotional supports to students. Um, we participated in one of the twenty work streams that Lisa mentioned before, we received an employer support grant, and we've been able to pass some funds through to San Rafael as well, um, to get certified wellness coaches certified through the state, and they are also included as providers on the fee schedule as well. Uh, but as you can imagine, there are multiple different onboarding requirements um for this program. Applications to the state, getting accepted, attending multiple meetings, that sort of thing as well. And our last slide is kind of some of our reflections.
Uh, so one I would say is um trying to merge two systems that are so entrenched in bureaucracy and procedures and paperwork, so the healthcare industry and the public ed industry, and getting them to merge is a Herculean task. It's awesome, and it's revolutionary, and I'm so glad California is pursuing this, and it's a heavy lift. Initially, the state thought this would all be rolled out and everybody would be doing it within five years. Well, twenty twenty-six marks the fifth year, and you saw only fifty-six LEAs are there, and we have over a thousand in California. So it's taking more time than they thought, so, and we've been part of that that learning opportunity across the state, but just knowing it'll take time to do it right. Um, and that is definitely one of the challenges of all the laws that govern a health um insurance company versus public schools still need more communication and partnership.
Lots of state and federal approvals are required. Um, uh, Medi-Cal in California is federal Medicaid, and so anytime California wants to make a change, they have to get federal approval for that, so that takes time as well.
It's different languages.
Yes.
FERPA is public school law, um HIPAA is health record law. Those two have to find a way to come together, because if we're gonna bill insurance for a public ed service, you're actually crossing both of those. Um, and so we all need to be, well, not all you, but all of us as the practitioners and the people responsible for this have to become much more familiar and fluent in both of these languages.
And I think for school staff, this is a tremendous paradigm shift. Um, most, we, Lisa and I are both school psychologists, and this is not what we and have signed up for when we got into the work, but we recognize how important this is, and I think your staff, Ricky, knows that as well. And um they've been excellent partners with us in this work, and we're looking forward to continuing that. And, you know, we're not, we're not, we're fully aware of, you know, we're asking a lot of staff who already have a lot on their plate as well. So we're really working hard to make sure that this is not an additional burden for them, and that, and so training and support is really important for us to make sure we're making that available to them.
And I guess I would end by just expressing tremendous appreciation to the superintendent for agreeing to kind of partner with us, um, and, you know, make sure staff time is dedicated to pursuing this. And definitely Susan, who, you know, we are in touch with all the time and has such a commitment to this work and helping us lead it on all of your behalf, most of you, Bob, I know you're in meetings now because of the financial element to this. It really, again, is another workload that we're asking of staff that already had full-time workflows, and we could not do it without your trust and your participation with us, so we're really grateful for all of you.
And if I can just say, Bob, this is definitely going to be a budget win for us.
Yes.
It's just a question of when, we're just starting out, but we see that this will really help benefit our our students and our budget. Very excited about it.
That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our pleasure. So before you go, this is, I will, any comments or questions? Because this will be a motion, so just any comments or questions from our trustees.
Sure, um, I want to begin off by saying thank you, this was highly informative, and sometimes I think um mental health, especially when it comes to students and the and then the components of a school district, it's not really talked about a lot. Um, and this is like, as you guys highlighted, an increasing problem. And if we begin to address it right now, and we lead, you know, Ca- California's doing it, our district's doing it, and we begin to lead in this, maybe it's something, other states will follow, and you know, this is very informative, so thank you.
Thank you, trustee.
Yeah, thank you.
Coming from uh high education, um, I, you know, I I know we're also dealing with the same challenges to uh at a at a college campus level. Um, and I oftentimes think that when we get to the college level, sometimes it's a little bit too late, too little too late. So I'm I'm glad we're supporting and focusing on this at the Cape Patrol school system already. Um, this, I know that you already have all the statistic, but I I actually just recently received an email from our campus talking about uh suicide and nationally eleven percent of out, one out of nine college students have to report having thought of suicide within the past year. So these are, these are real issue, and I know we're all working toward uh better support, so having that reimbursement system set up, definitely, hopefully, we cover some of the costs that to support, especially when we are dealing with um budget challenges as well, so thank, thanks again for all you do.
You know I'm a big fan, but I think the key part is that the partnership of creative funding models and grant opportunities, and we heard that with our Heads Up um presentation, I think community partnerships and creativity is going to get us through every budget season. So thank you for your continued partnership at the district.
Thank you, I I think super important um uh the work that you're doing, and I, access is a huge problem. And like I just, I cringe when I think about like someone who's struggling and just doesn't have a place to go and doesn't know how to access it. So anything that helps with that, uh, I I appreciate, so thank you.
Yes, I just wanted to echo what my uh colleagues are saying, you know, I think about when I taught in L.A. InterCity many years ago and all the students in my fifth grade and parents knew services, and they had to take like three different bus stops, three different locations, could they get the day off? And then they felt like they were being different for looking for services, so I I really appreciate your perspective of um we're going to the students and the families. Um, I love how intentional you're about the trainings and being clear that school districts need funding. And as we talk about, we are in very difficult times financially as schools and uh public schools, so I'm excited to see where this revenue can um support our future work. So thank you so much for such an informative presentation, and we were just discussing if we need to do a motion or not, but I think we should just do a motion.
It's under, it's under presentations, but the title of the presentation is Presentation and Approval of.
So we're just gonna say a motion, and that way it's covered either way, so do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Moved by trustee Kerner. Do I have second?
Second.
Second, oh, all right. Second by trustee uh Rhodas Diaz, all right, first one, do I have uh all in, all in favor say a aye? Aye, all right, that one should pop, because then we're covered, whether we need it or not, thank you so much. Thank you.
Good job.
Yes, and now we're gonna go to student updates because they have homework and they have other things to do. Um, so can I go with trustee Cornet, please?
Uh, yeah, uh, I'll start it off, um, on behalf of Madrone, I'm happy to say that I have a plan. Nothing is out of the ordinary, so I would say. But uh we recently had a club day, which we had different activities, including board games. We had, we, there was a painting rocks, we played soccer. Um, I was personally out on the soccer. Um, then we had a Day of the Dead celebration at uh Madrone, we had music, we had food from, I think it was Casa Mañana, I think it was, and then, you know, activities, face paint, all that other stuff. Um, and then we had our our second off-ground, off-campus lunch um just last week on Friday, where we all got finally got our second time to go off campus, some of us went to Chipotle, others went to the gas station, just get a little snack. Um, but yeah, everybody made it back on time, everybody was responsible, so I mean, hopefully there's a third one. Um, but yeah, that's, that's what we got from a drone.
Oh, thank you, trustee Cornet, I'm glad to hear how the off, staying on campus, we'll have to come see that and going off campus. I'm glad everyone came back on time. All right, all right, trustee Lumen, did I say that right?
Yeah.
All right, okay.
Um, everything at Davidson's been going good. Um, seventh and eighth graders just finished their rego presentations that educate students about substance prevention. The jazz and advanced band won first place at the fairfield music competition last weekend. The field is finally finished. PE and lunchtime activities have been taking full advantage of the new field and soon and the student body has been really excited to get to use it and play on it. There will be a ribbon cutting ceremony next month to celebrate its opening. Um, the continued construction on our multi-purpose center has been going good, they got their phone. Um, eighth grade midterms have coming, are coming up. Flag football won the championship and we get a banner and pennant for the gym. And cross country had a first place finisher from sixth grade and she also gets a ban, banner and pennant for the gym as well. Basketball trials are this week and next week and our second spirit week and rally is coming up next month.
Oh, thank you. And I believe that student in sixth grade was Alicia Eichmann, who is my neighbor. She was the first, I think, in a while for sixth grade or something like that. She's really fast. Well, thank you so much for those updates and I heard the talk on the bus. It's all about the field. So, so excited. So thank you for sharing that. All right. And now I'm going to go, thank you for your updates and then I'm going to go to our labor partners. Do we know if they're online?
I believe we have some online. Yes, we have Morgan Agnew with SRFT. So I'll bring him over first and then. Couple others, but we'll get him started.
Thank you, Dad.
Morgan, you should be able to start your video and audio.
Sorry about that. I'm coming.
You're good.
There we go. There we go. Sorry that took me a little back and forth. Don't mind the Cape buffalo over my shoulder. Blurred my video, but it's been a night. Good evening trustees. My name is Morgan Agnew. I am president of the San Rafael Federation of Teachers. The union representing certificated employees in the three high schools. Our membership includes over a hundred and forty classroom teachers, teachers on special assignment. Counselors, librarians, psychologists, speech therapists and nurses. First of all, I'd like to welcome our newest board member, Kennedy Rhodos. Thank you to you and to all the applicants for your willingness to serve our district. We are always grateful to the community members who step forward to serve on our board. But as we have struggled with a vacant seat for several months, we are especially grateful for your service tonight. We look forward to working with you throughout this one year appointment and perhaps further on if you choose to run for reelection or for election. As Thanksgiving is around the corner, we thought it'd be an appropriate time to use our report to express some gratitude. We are grateful to work in a state that has consistently stood behind public education. And offer unequivocal support for students who are here without documentation. We are grateful to work in a community that consistently supports its schools. Particularly by passing bonds and partial taxes that enable us to afford modern facilities and enrichment for our students. As well as make generous contributions to partner organizations like Heads Up. We are grateful to work in a school district that respects the voices of its staff as well as its students and parents. And we are grateful to all our community partners like Heads Up, Ten Thousand Degrees and Canal Community Alliance for their tremendous support. Clearly, things are not perfect. There's always work to be done. There's always room to improve. And we're not always going to agree on the highest priorities or the right strategies, but we can disagree without being disagreeable. Trustees and especially our newest trustee, we look forward to working with you to make our district even better. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Morgan.
All right, we have Jamie Solis with SRTA. Jamie, you can start your video and audio and begin.
Hello. Good nee, good evening, Board of Trustees, Superintendent Giselle. I am Jaime Solis. Fifth grade teacher at San Pedro School and treasurer of San Rafael Teachers Association, representing our early intervention through eighth grade educators this evening. First, we would like to welcome trustee Kennedy Rhodos Diaz to the board. SRTA is looking forward to connecting with you and collaborating throughout your term to continue improving systems, structures. And experiences for students, families and staff in San Rafael City Schools. For our report this evening, we have an update on negotiations and our participation in the Elementary Budget Advisory Committee. And the Strategic Plan Refresh Task Force Committee. First, with negotiations, we have had two sessions at the table with the district team. Articles that have been discussed include Article Two, compensation. Article Three, work year and hours. Article Four, assignments and transfers, and Article Five, leaves. As of the last session, we have reached a tentative agreement for language about job vacancies that occur during the summer. And we look forward to making more progress in reaching tentative agreements over the coming months. Budget conversations and decisions have some impact on further movement and possible bargaining agreements. So far, our executive board, bargaining team and many members have participated in two budget advisory committee meetings. And look forward to understanding more of the budget landscape during tomorrow's meeting. Our members stand firm on prioritizing budget cuts as far away from students as possible. Student success and experiences rely heavily on programs, systems and positions that have directed contact with students on a regular basis. Additionally, our executive board and some of our membership have participated in two strategic plan refresh meetings. And look forward to January's objectives. While the work of this committee will impact years to come beyond this school year. SRTA members also understand that the priorities of this plan impact decisions that are made about what is maintained. Added, revised or eliminated from the next steps as a district. We appreciate the opportunities to share our voices, seek clarification and collaborate with district leadership in determining what these priorities are. We hope everyone has a restful and well-deserved upcoming break. Thank you.
Thank you.
And apologies for the mispronunciation. And next we have Donnie Joe Pipkin with CSCA.
Good evening, superintendent, school board trustees, cabinet members and members of the community. My name is Donnie Joe Pipkin and I'm the chapter secretary for the CSCA San Rafael number three four one. We would first like to congratulate and welcome to the board Kennedy Rhodos Diaz. We look forward to working with you to ensure all of our students and families continue to receive. An education that aligns with our core values, equity, community and joy. Our negotiating team is looking forward to beginning negotiations tomorrow. And we are positive that we will be able to continue the collaborative partnership that has created a shared. Commitment to fairness and equity. A lot of our work with our contract has been done. With our last tentative agreement and our goal is to continue working on our contract. Which will only help our classified employees in the long run. In closing, CSCA hopes that everyone has a restful Thanksgiving break. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks to all of our union partners. And now I'm going to go to our trustees and. To our newest trustee, if you'd like to go last, let us know. If you'd like to go first, you're welcome to, but. I was, I don't think I was this nice to trustee Lau.
I had to go too. I was like, hey.
No, no, we continue.
Tradition.
Where we give updates on, you know.
It's kind.
Welcome.
Welcome.
I'll go last for this one.
Okay, okay. All right, trustee Lau.
Yeah, we definitely have been nicer to them because I remember standing. They cut a table this time.
You know, it's, it's, it's the season of Thanksgiving.
That's true. Let's do it.
We're about to be off on vacation. So trustee Lau, I know you have plenty to update us, so please.
All right. Yeah, thank you again. And again, I just want to acknowledge and welcome our newest trustee. To, to join our board and, you know, again, having been, been through the process, I know how. How time consuming and how much work that you have put in and join us and also knowing that you're a product of. Of San Rafael schools, city school district, as well as one of the CSU graduate. Having worked for CSU before, I'm very proud that you represent both. Both systems. So thank you. Thanks for joining us.
Thank you.
I have a few updates. On March fifth, I joined the Strategic Plan Refresh Task Force meeting. So there's a second strategic task force meeting. And I just want to thank you, our superintendent Geisel, and also the district leadership have done a great job facilitating. The meeting, building a point on the, to get to twenty four. We reveal our goals and strategic actions to ensure that we, we make. On the dynamic roadmap for supporting our students, staff and district success. Ensuring that we, we meet, we're meeting the need of all our students. I'm also pleased to be there and met some of the students representative and community representative. So that we can hear our student voice, which is very important to us as we move forward. So I would like to encourage more students if they're listening or I actually invite the student representative there to invite more of her friends. Bring other students to join us next time. We talk about alumni networks. Hopefully alumni is listening. They're willing to come and serve. To join our future meetings to help us to shrinken our strategic plan. November seventh, I go to tour the Oak Hill workforce housing site. Along with some of our other colleagues from Nevada, the County Marine, the College of Marine, as well as the community. Marine Community Foundation and others. I want to personally thanks the Marine County Office of Education. And also the Marine County Public Financing Authority for facilitating a visit. Keeping us informed and educating us about the, the project. We want to encourage anyone who are interested in learning more about this project, plus if they have any doubts and need more information. Please visit their website. There's a source for additional information about the project, including the essential project document. There's an FAQ session that notes for all the JPA meetings today, including all the financial plans that they just updated. So I find it very helpful. So I would really encourage folks to. Visit if they have any questions regarding this project. On March, November twelfth, I also attended E two meeting. The committee is to, to discuss the efficiency and effectiveness about a course and within school district, within a county. During the meeting, I want to report that we discussed the countywide substitute teacher MOU. The next meeting, November eleventh, we'll be getting update about E bite and other special education update. So there will be. Some additional news from there. I'm glad that we passed the updated resolutions acknowledging the, the special. Heritage that we want to recognize. I want to especially acknowledge, I hope I didn't say his name wrong, but it's I think I do. Azim Musu, the San Rafael High School student who came to our board meeting last time. I know he was the AS, he is the ASB president there as well for attending our board meeting and making the public comment. On the non agenda item session. Requiring, requesting us to update the, the resolution to recognize the. Every American heritage and Muslim American, Muslim American heritage month. I know it's not perfect, the document, the document is not meant to be perfect. As I recall, when we first passed the resolution, I personally advocate for including the month of April. As the month of young child to recognize the critical role that family, early childhood educator and community. Which play in nurturing and shaping the, the future of our young, youngest learner. And amazing work that our district actually have done in early, early intervention and early education. So. I wanted really encourage us to treat that document as a, as a living, continuously update document and welcome any additional. Input to, to add any things that, you know, we, we might have missed or you want to be include. Into the document so that we can ensure that we serve the need of each and every, every students that we serve for these ongoing recognitions and. I want to keep this short at the end. Sorry. I just want to add this, the last thing because after hearing the heads up. Presentation, I know how important youth and art and performing arts, especially important for our student life. Last, this past Sunday, I attend Mr. Ben Chuck ninetieth birthday celebration. So. The reason I'm mentioning it that you may or may not know who Ben Chuck is. But you probably have heard and probably have seen at least once, if not more, the Marine Chinese cultural, cultural education line dance team performance. Since nineteen seventy nine, Ben has been the leading line dance team coach. For the county for over forty five years. He always there supporting our youth, coaching them. Participating in many performances at, at many educational site, including the county fair and also many of our school site. So the line ten, dance teams really have made an impact. A lots of, a lots of the line dancers are actually the students of our district. So there many of them show up and talk about the impact that they're performing art. In this case, promoting the culture or Chinese culture and also learning how to do lion dance. How that impact their life all the way, you know, that they can carry to their college life as well. So just want to acknowledge that and, and, and thank you, Mr. Ben Chuck for his work and also continue promoting. Our culture and heritage and supporting our student across the district. So. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Lau. Trustee Deanna Marsh.
Usually I go in like, you know, the beginning of the month till like, you know, like later, but I'm actually going to work backwards. So. Welcome. Just really excited. This is like the six thousandth welcome, but we're so excited to have, as Bob said earlier, we're working with a full deck now. So that is a lot of celebration with our governance team. So welcome. And we are all in this together. So as long as we're not violating the brown act, feel free to reach out to us to. For one on ones and coffees and teas and things like that to, to catch you up to speed, but welcome to our team. So December three through five is the California School Board Association Conference. And we have, you know, Dr. Jason Lau, who just joined our governance team in February and then trustee Rhodos, who just. Joined us this evening, but they have a great new trustee orientation. So if you have the opportunity, I know it's a lot of time, but the conference is going to be in Sacramento. And if you have an opportunity to sign up and do this all day workshop, it's a great favor. For how we move together and, and work together as a governance team. I am proud to be your Marine County Delegate Representative, representing all seventeen school districts. So. Prior to December three through five, I get two extra days in Sacramento doing legislation work. But what's great about the delegation body is that we help to set the public policy priorities for California School Board Association. So I will be hanging out with you, Bob, to get some more information to help inform that time. So they gave us homework. And also our counterparts at Marine County Office of Education. So that is December. I just want to thank our Director of Community School Partnerships, Pepe Gonzalez and his. Community Partnerships Team. They were able to rally very quickly. As we know with everything going on with federal funding cuts, what happened with SNAP, everything, we know it all. There are bright spot moments of partnership getting, coming together because we have those partnerships already in place and that trust in place. So with Pepe's team as well as San Rafael Fire Department in partnership with SF Marine Food Bank. It was an honor to be able to participate and volunteer with community liaisons from Beja Vista, San Pedro and Laurel Dell Elementary Schools. To be able to supplement for our seventy five SRCS families, additional food for, for them. We don't know if it's recurring, et cetera, but when you have an opportunity to supplement and support families, you just make it work and make it happen. And I just want to say thank you for the opportunity because I was able to spend time with community liaisons from those three schools. Plus parent volunteers and we were able to get seventy five families what they needed in two hours of time and that was a beautiful Friday. So I just wanted to say thank you for that opportunity. That is going backwards. Yeah, right. I, I did not have the opportunity to attend the Culture Equity and Belonging Committee meeting that was on November twelve. I apologize. I was out sick. However, this is a reminder that we have all these different committees for different parents, students. And, and community members to be able to participate and lend your, your voice into strengthening our San Rafael City Schools. Policies, process and all the wonderful things. The Joint Legislative Advisory Committee or JALAC, it's our legislative body with our school districts. And what's great is that helps to set again, the public policy priorities for Sacramento, but what. I wanted to highlight is that save the date, our legislative field trip to Sacramento with all of our school districts, plus our partners at College of Marine. Is going to be February eleventh, twenty twenty six. And this is an opportunity for us as school board trustees, our administration to. Be in conversation directly with our local electeds and also in partnership with our student trustees. SRCS always has a representation. So it's really great to make sure that they are part of that legislative process. And finally, on, oh, actually, safe routes to schools this month, we're celebrating Ruby Bridges. So there are a lot of different schools. Celebrating like walking and biking and, and safely going to their schools, but Ruby Bridges is a young woman who helped to integrate. Our schools in the South over God knows fifty years ago. And the thing is that woman is in her sixties and here we are today in twenty twenty five. And it's just a reminder and it's so wonderful to integrate history as well as importance of, you know, safe transportation to school. So. I know our various elementary schools celebrated Ruby Bridges by supporting that. So I know our various elementary schools celebrated Ruby Bridges by supporting that with safe routes. And finally, on November five, it was an honor to be a keynote panelist member with. For the Women of Industry event that was hosted by the San Rafael Chamber of Commerce. And in the note of, you know, the work that Heads Up does and the note that with Marine County Office of Education. And then this theme of the importance of mental health and the statistics that each of you have shared, you know. We are all struggling with something and at that event, we talked about women and leadership, especially in Marin. And also what challenges may arise when you have a life pivot. And so I shared something very personal and then some of them are here in this room. But mental health and suicide ideation are very real things. And I've recently finished a six month program. And this was my third bout in treatment in the last five years. And I share this because that's why I serve on this school board, because lived experience matters. So I know that my updates are very long and I'm out and about in community, but there have been many moments where I was like, you know what, six months ago? I didn't even want to be here. And that's very real. Smiling depression is real, I can be the best ambassador I can, but if we don't acknowledge what's happening in our own lives, how can we serve? So I share that invulnerability because that's how I lead, but it's very thematic. About where our dollars are going and where our investments are going for our students and our staff. So I just wanted to share that that's something important and I was honored to represent San Rafael City Schools on that day. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee De Niava Marsh, thank you for sharing that. Thank you, Trustee Kerner.
Thank you for your updates and another welcome to Trustee Brevistius. Super excited to have a full board now and again, super happy about all the candidates that applied to this, but. Everything is set. I just want to express, I hope everyone is ready for a good holiday coming up and gets a good break. I know the seniors aren't listening, but seniors, please. Seniors, please finish your UC applications and CSU applications before the holidays so your parents can enjoy some time off. So. Applications are due and I'm wishing everyone the best on finishing that up, so. I don't have an extensive update tonight, but I'll leave it at that and pass on to Trustee Martina.
All right, so and then I'm going to hand it back, so. You know what, Trustee Kennedy Rhodes Diaz, I'm so excited you're here, this is the most gratitude you're going to get, no kidding. But I'm finally excited that someone's here to break our boats. So I'm excited for you to, you know, not abstain or not, no, but I'm kidding. Thank you so much for joining us, I'm really excited for you to serve students and teachers in our school district with us and. Join with us in service, so. I don't have an extensive update, I did want to say I'm thinking of all the teachers and parents and students and homework and projects. And I hope everyone gets a nice week off. And I hope that everyone is feeling safe out there, these are really difficult times for some families that are. Sheltering in place during such difficult climate times and I think everyone knows what I'm talking about, so. I hope everyone is very generous and kind, whether it's with food security or any way we can volunteer. I have been, just to share, I think one of the things. Trustee Rhodes Diaz, I have fifth, sixth graders at Davidson, I think what I've been really enjoying about this journey at Davidson is seeing the school unfold, all the hard work. And seeing the sports that are on campus. And seeing all these schools that we have come together in community and cheering each other on, so it's been really wonderful to see Davidson. Experience it is for all the students, so that's been a treat with all the teachers that also coach. And that is really my update and I just deep gratitude for all the work we're all doing together and having it, that also means all of us here, so. Trustee, any updates you would like to share?
As of now, I have no updates, I do want to thank everybody. Everybody has been very welcoming, I'm eager to step foot into my community. Play a role in community engagement with our school, within our school district. So I'm going to be looking out for ways to participate in some of these actual curriculums of some of the things. Our fellow trustee board members are also participating in, so just want to say thank you to everybody.
Yes, we have committees for you.
We are doubled up, so we're happy to share the wealth, Trustee.
Thank you for your first official update and next time you will go first. All right, so now I'm going to open up for public comment on non agendaized items. And if you have a public comment on non agendaized item, please fill out the blue form, you have three minutes. Do I see anyone in the room? Those on Zoom can use the raise hand feature if they'd like to give a public comment. I will give it a moment. Yes, and if you need translation, let us know, we also have translation. I've seen, okay. Okay, thank you so much, okay, so we have no public comments tonight. All right, I do want to, before we talk about the approval of the consent agenda. Approval of the consent agenda. I will want to acknowledge that item fourteen, we're pulling because it is a duplicate. And then also on number twenty one, we will vote for all of them first without, by pulling twenty one and then we'll re-vote on twenty one by itself. Separately, does that make sense? Okay, so. Now, anyone want to approve the consent agenda item without fourteen and then also pulling twenty one for now? Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Moved by Trustee Kerner, do I have a second?
A second.
Second by Trustee Lau, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, the consent agenda item was passed except number twenty one, so now can I have. An approval of consent agenda item twenty one and this will be with Trustee Lau stating, do I have a motion?
Motion to approve item twenty one.
Moved by Trustee De Niava Marsh, do I have a second?
Second to motion.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, every.
And he's recusing.
Yeah, recusing, recusing, sorry, recusing that. Oh, so it was moved by, sorry, who moved twenty one, was that trustee De Niava Marsh? And then the second was trustee Kerner and then all were in favor. No problem.
Except for, yes.
Except for Jason recused himself. Okay, thank you everyone for being patient and now we are going to go to staff report. JPA Services, SRCS Academic Roadmap High School Mile Markers.
All right, thank you so much and Trustee Rhodes Diaz, you're in for a treat, it's your first Ed Services presentation, enjoy. It's a party, the teaching and learning branch of the operation. So really what we're offering tonight is just a very brief, kind of broad brush stroke. On the high school indicators for our academic roadmap for our district. Last month, we presented quite extensively on the CAS results and we included the indicators up till sixth grade markers. And we wanted to provide a bit of a bridge tonight, just to let you know what the high school markers are. And then when we come back in January, we'll look at the California Dashboard Results that were just released last week. Okay, so like I said, we're building on that, we're going to be talking about. The three kind of big ones that we look at, ninth grade semester course grades. For tenth grade, we are looking at A through G eligibility and for eleventh grade, we're looking at enrollment, course enrollment for CTE and AP courses. Our director, or sorry, our coordinator of data and assessments, Cassandra Lane, is going to provide us with an overview, we do have hard copies for you. There are a few slides in your hard copy packet that we will not be covering, but we wanted to put it there just for transparency. You're going to see big picture data of all students, the slides included in your hard copy include the different student groups. And like I said, we'll go into that more into detail in January. So with that, I am going to pass the mic, so to speak, to Cassie, who will share the update with us.
Good evening, trustees, I believe you thought you got your last welcome, but welcome back. Excited to have you here, so tonight will be much shorter than last night, I promise, I know you have already been through a lot. And I want to make sure that my data is comprehensible, but as always, if there are questions, feel free to ask them afterwards or. Send Cecilia an email and I will respond. So in your packet, you have the same acronyms, we love acronyms, especially up in Ed Services. The specific ones we will talk about today are the ever and never EL as a reminder. And ever EL is a group of students that includes students who were English learners as well as those who have been reclassified. And the never ELs are students who are monolingual English speakers or students who came into our schools proficient in English, who also. May speak another language at home. We also have socioeconomically disadvantaged students and students with disabilities. Those are our key student groups that we go through. As a refresher, our academic roadmap includes mile markers in kindergarten, third, sixth, ninth, tenth and eleventh grade. We developed this roadmap a couple of years ago with help from the board. To give us more actionable data, a lot of the data we use in education is very old. State assessment data is taken at the end of each year and isn't released until the fall of the following year. The dashboard, which we will present to you in January, is even further delayed because again, it's data from the twenty four, twenty five school year. These are local metrics that we can look at in real time. So today, we're going to look at our ninth graders who are passing key courses in English, math and science. We're going to look at our tenth graders who, based on their academic plans, are. On track to meet UC A to G eligibility, speaking of UC and CSU college applications, we want as many of our students as possible to be eligible to apply to those colleges. And then looking at our eleventh graders and their ability or their enrollment in. More rigorous or more personalized courses as they become upperclassmen, they can choose CTE pathways, they could choose AP courses. And those are opportunities for our young learners to step into development and develop their own education. So this graph, and again, in your printed packets, you have more versions of it that go into those student groups. But this graph takes a look at all of our ninth graders and the rate at which they are passing Algebra One. Algebra One is a key math course. Because it sets you up on a trajectory to be able to take higher order math courses. It also is the first of the A to G required courses in. Students have to take three math courses. And so you'll see that we have a group of students who are in advanced math courses that are green banned at the bottom. Those are students who took our Algebra Accelerated Path in eighth grade and so now they are in geometry. We are assuming that they are passing Algebra because they already have credit for it, so they are included in that. Rate of students passing and then we have A, Ds and Cs. A D is technically passing for graduation purposes, but not for UC eligibility, so for this reason, we're using C and above as our metric. And you'll see the red shades are Ds and Fs, so those are students who are enrolled in Algebra One but are not passing. The dark gray is students who are in one of our prerequisite math courses, so Algebra A, Algebra Readiness, Algebra B. Those are courses that. Were seen Algebra One, they were not ready for Algebra One when they left middle school. And then that light gray is a group of students who are in specialized math determined by their individualized education thing. And you'll see that at the moment, these are semester grades, we have about sixty one percent of our ninth graders who are passing Algebra One. It has risen over the past two years and we will get another look after. Semester grades close in January at current year grades.
So Cassie, just for clarification, this, these are current tenth graders, this is based on last year's semester one, semester two grades. So as to Cassie's point, when we finish out the semester, we'll be able to start pooling these grades for the current ninth graders.
Historically, we've brought quarter grades to you, but there is some. Some people use quarter grades as an encouragement to pick it up before the end of the semester, so we wanted to limit to semester grades since those were official transcript grades.
Quick question.
Probably have the same question.
Pre requisite math lumped in there and it takes away from like, so these percentages are much higher if we don't have the pre, why is prerequisite lumped in there?
Graders who are not passing Algebra One.
So they're not passing.
They might be in Algebra Readiness class.
Okay, so automatically.
That are struggling in Algebra or math in general.
There's not a grade assigned at that point, it's.
They have a grade.
They have a grade, yeah, so from top to bottom, it's, that represents kind of the most pursory. Algebra course we would have, which is Algebra Readiness, all the way to the AP classes on the bottom.
Okay.
So, and so the picture is all of our ninth graders?
Yes.
The goal would be that all of our ninth graders are passing Algebra One. Right, and a portion of our ninth graders are not even enrolled in Algebra One. So that's why they're included, because they are still ninth graders.
And same in an ideal world, you wouldn't even, you wouldn't have the gray block, that would, they would all be taking that class.
And so I guess my question is, it seems like there's. And I'm sorry, I'm just processing this, so I'm just looking at. Like when I'm looking at the percentages of the students in prereq, like we have. Where are the biggest percentages of our students and if this is all, this is San Rafael High and Terellinda High, correct? Because is the advanced math at the bottom more advanced, you were saying this, I was looking at the graph, is the advanced math at the bottom, is that like more advanced than?
Yes, those are students who essentially took the equivalent of Algebra One as eighth graders and so now as ninth graders, they're enrolled in geometry, which is traditional.
Geometry and then the others stay in Algebra.
Yes.
Okay.
So those who maybe took Math eight.
Yeah.
Are in Algebra One, those who took Math eight but maybe weren't doing as well, might be in Algebra A.
Okay. Great, because I think one of the things that I, and I can't remember his, his name now, he was, he became, went to work at Ross. Was who?
Tyler.
Tyler, so one of the things, sorry, this is going to date me maybe two, one, two years ago? I think one of the things that I am learning is as I met Davidson, is a lot of parents, including all parents, inclusive of all economic backgrounds, don't understand. A, how do I get into advanced math or how do I get my child into Algebra by eighth grade and that tracks me. Ninth grade, that tracks me into my fourth year, so that's just what I'm looking at, there's no percentages of where, who's where, but it's just a little. Sorry, I'm processing.
No, that's a great question, and if you lay that next to what the tenth grade indicator, Cassie, you'll talk us through. Is that trajectory to A through G, to be A through G eligible, you need to be.
Oh, you need to be there.
By as a freshman.
Yeah.
Right, so we're trying to do more and more outreach at younger grades, we just, at our D LAC presentation last week, we presented on A through G requirements. Because you can't be too young to really understand, parents need to understand even from fifth grade going into middle school. There's a trajectory that we want to ensure students are working towards.
Right.
And looks you've had growth too and people, and the advanced math, right?
We have, we have, overall, we've seen some notable growth in middle and high school in our math. So we're trending upwards, we still have a long ways to go, but we are seeing positive growth there.
And I think before we get too far, I just wanted to say that's why sixth grade math is one of our mile markers. Because seventh grade math is really where that that track starts to diverge for many students. And so we wanted to have eyes on sixth grade mathematicians before they start heading down these divergent paths.
Right, and that's something I spoke with Tyler about is, I think parents realize it in eighth grade and it's like really seventh grade, you're totally being tracked. To be honest, and I think it's important for parents to realize that.
Yes, and I think that. The other piece to your point, so A to G requirements require three years of math. If you don't take Algebra One, if you're in Algebra A, for example, you can still technically meet those A to G requirements if you pass. Math, Algebra B in your second year and sophomore year, and then you have to pass two more years. So you have to pass every single class that you take. As opposed to this where you might have a little more leeway or you might have an opportunity in senior year to take a different or a higher order class like calculus or statistics.
And can I ask a silly question, just because you know, I have, I have math interest because of my, one of mine, one of my child's, one of my children. You can take. You can take courses at our community college, right? Or you can take an online, what are the options?
Yeah, we do offer dual enrollment. We have a pretty strong partnership with College of Marin.
Right.
You're actually going to hear about another opportunity. We're hoping to get, get approved this evening. And then families, do you opt and can do like summer programs? You can do a summer online class through multiple community colleges.
Okay, great, thank you. Sorry to delay.
Okay, no, these are good questions.
Since President Martine got to ask silly questions.
Oh, go, go, sorry.
I do have a silly question I want to ask. Because I've seen this graph at the last strategic discussion. And I don't know if I'm the only one to understand it, but I, I'm interested to know why, and we see it for all the, most of the other graph too, that Semester One is higher than Semester Two. So why is that dip?
I happened to be sitting with one of our high school math teachers when we looked at these graphs at the strategic plan refresh meeting. And he said simply that Semester Two is actually harder. He said Semester One is generally a review or a slight add-on to what students may have learned in eighth grade. And Semester Two is really that bridge to the next year or the bridge to the future math. And so Semester Two content is harder.
So that, that full hour, but it's full hour everything though. When we look at the, the rest of the graph, mostly everything is the dip. So I just, at least I just want to personally know that it's, it's, it's normal. I guess not, not typical. Does that, we see that dip? Because not just math, I think across other subject is they all showing a dip.
So as a former elementary teacher, I can't say, and I only can report what the math teacher said. I did not happen to have an English or science teacher at the table, but I would assume similar that you're reviewing from the year before.
Yeah, I think we're having. Yeah, the semester's a little bit longer too. So when we talk to teachers, they go, well, it's a longer semester. But when you think about kind of the standards that we're teaching towards, right? Our state standards, there's a lot of prerequisite skills that go into mastering those standards. So if you think of it of kind of almost spiraling and layering on, if a student may be lacking some of those foundational or learning targets to get to the mastery of the standard towards the end of the year, that's going to, that's going to be a factor. Right? So you're, because you're not just learning in like an isolation in, you know, September, October, November, December. It's not something new each time, it's building. So if there's any gaps in the, kind of in that first semester, they will play out in the second semester because some of these themes and these core math concepts and skills are going to spiral.
It's just interesting that, that we're not building on top, you know, kind of like, they're all building up.
Yes, ideally, the trajectory is going like this.
Building down like some way, but okay, I appreciate the explanation.
Yeah, I mean, if you're struggling with one specific kind of component and then you get past that, but then it comes into complain and more, into playing more complex math. You're going to struggle in that because you don't necessarily have all the holes in the foundation filled just yet.
Yeah. And if I may make one recommendation is, I know that each year, the different cohort, different group. So the graph in some way is showing kind of like they all link together. I've, I've personally, I think it's a little bit misleading in some way. Like, for example, that, that one year, the Semester One and Two should not be linked to the next year because they're, they're not like, they're increased from 52 to 55. It's a different group, right? It's different, they start at different level. So there are no linkage in some way, but we are linking them all together.
Are, are you saying that because this isn't a cohort data? Yeah, this is, these are different group of students every year. So cohort data can tell a different story. But what this tells us is just programmatically, in terms of teaching and learning and instructional practices, we do look for growth across the years, right? So yeah, we, we've had that discussion with Strategic Task Force as well, that cohort data serves a purpose. But just in terms of the effectiveness of our, of our program and our instruction is, we can get a good idea from this kind of year-to-year data.
So you have more math data in front of you, but I am going to skip ahead to English. So English is in, in terms of those A to G requirements, you have to pass four years of college prep English. And so you really need to hit the ground running in order to meet the requirements with this one. So this is looking at our rate of students who are passing English nine. You'll see again, we have A, Bs, and Cs. And then we have Bs and Fs. And then the dark gray in this one is students in ELD. And in our high school, those are generally newcomers or more recent arrivals. So people who may have arrived in the past three years generally might still be in an ELD course. And I, correct me if I'm wrong, that sometimes instead of English nine because it's a support that they need. So that's taking the place of their English course in their class programming. And then we have that small proportion of students who are in our special ed English programs. And so you'll see as the trend continues where it dips for Semester Two. But generally, our, our rates are somewhat stable around 70% passing English nine. Okay.
I have a quick question.
Yes.
You don't have the never EL cohort or in these, is that data available?
I, yes, it is available.
Okay.
What we've done is just included the, yes, I can get that for you. If you email Cecilia, I'm happy to prepare that slide for you. And I can send it to all of the trustees.
Yeah.
The last group is the science. So science is not something that necessarily needs to be passed in freshman year. I believe the A to G requirements are two years of lab science. And so it's something that some people choose to defer to sophomore year. But of students who are choosing to take science in their freshman year, we have about 70 to 75% of our students passing with a C or better. There is a prerequisite course called Intro to Science Practices. Those are for newcomers. And then we have again, a small group of students in Special Education Science courses. Science nine is interesting at San Rafael High. It's Physics of the Universe. And at Terrellinda, it is Biology. So they're actually different types of lab science taken in freshman year based on different schools.
And why is that?
I don't know, but I find it fun.
Is that how we're going to describe it, fun?
Well, I mean, everyone takes physics and everyone takes biology. So it's not putting any student group at a disadvantage. It's just depending on the school you go to, you're taking a different course.
And then do they switch those courses a different year?
I believe so.
There's a life science, a physical science. So the students have the choice of what they might take moving forward to meet those requirements, yeah. But yeah, that's the offering at SR and the offering.
Because I think when Tyler was here, we were talking about course alignment. And that was two years ago. So has, we're still working on a course alignment? Wow. We're still working on course alignment. Okay, good to know.
I didn't mean to step in it, but I find it interesting.
I think you find it fun, right?
I just find it interesting that our schools are, are unique, that we don't have this kind of, anyway, I'll move on.
I thank you.
I apologize. Okay, so this is looking into 10th grade. And this is using our academic plan, which is a feature within our student information system where students are able to map out the courses they intend to take during their four years of high school. This is something where two years ago with Tyler, we were just learning about it and getting counselors in the habit of using it. At this point, I believe it's an expectation that all ninth graders have an academic plan coming in. And we're able to use that as a way to kind of get a future glance at who might be eligible for UC or CSU upon graduation based on their academic plan. You'll notice the red box, there are a couple of course types that are excluded from this analysis. Students don't necessarily come into ninth grade knowing all of the electives that they're going to take during their four years. And they might make choices as they progress through high school. And the same can be said for languages other than English or foreign languages and visual and performing arts. And so for this analysis, I excluded those missing credits from this academic plan because we don't want to say the 10th graders won't be prepared just because they haven't decided which visual and performing art class they want to take. That being said, this is looking at the remaining core courses. And you can see that about 50% of our 10th graders in the fall of this school year are on track to meet A to G eligibility upon graduation. Our target is 70%. I have noticed that looking at the actual outcome data in San Rafael City Schools, our data has tracked upwards over the past three years. So we will just continue to monitor this and see how it goes. But again, continuing to talk to parents at earlier and earlier ages so that everyone knows what A to G eligibility is, what it entails, and how to support our students to get there.
I have a question.
Yes.
Is there a way we could compare this to other nearby districts?
Yes, there is. And I actually pulled the numbers. If you don't mind, I'll grab my computer. I have Nevada and TAM Union as comparisons.
Okay, that's great.
That's great, I appreciate it. We also, we're not that far off from the state. And what I find really interesting about this particular kind of marker is there's A through G eligibility. And then we also get measures on college and career readiness, which is, A through G is part of it. And for college and career readiness, we trend a lot higher than specific A through G. So it's just kind of an interesting, when you start to pull the data apart, because we do have a lot of students enrolled in AP that counts towards college and career readiness. We do have a lot of students in CTE programs that counts towards college and career readiness. They factor CASM in. So it's kind of interesting just to know that this isn't necessarily a make or break, but we definitely want to get that number up. We want more students to be able to, to be on that track.
Right.
So this is, these are, this is projected data. Our actual numbers, so cohorts who have graduated, the class of 2023, 41.7% of our students were A to G eligible in class of 2024, 43.9%. And then in 2025, 45.3%. So we have made incremental growth with our actual graduates. TAM Union in 2023 was 66.5%, 77.3% the following year, and then 80.3% this last year. And then Nevada Unified had 50.5% in 2023, 52.5 in 2024, and then 50.7 in 2025. So all three districts have made growth over the past three years.
And I think this is one too, where the, the never EL would be beneficial because I'm trying to understand if they're even hitting the 70%.
Yeah, when you see that, when you look at the student groups and you can look at our never EL or our English-only students, they are definitely high up there. Yeah. And, and if you think about historically, within kind of the last five, five years or so, the number of newcomers we've gotten with, with really interrupted formal education that we are trying to meet, we've been trying to meet them where they're at. And getting them on the A through G track is very different because we're giving them a lot of foundational learning. So I'm, I'm thinking that with that population going down currently, we might be, be able to see a more accurate kind of data point on where our students overall are landing. So if you remember the last board meeting, Cassie kind of broke down of all of our English learners, the percentage that are newcomers in K5, 6, 8, and then 912. And 912, there was a huge amount of newcomers. So again, just kind of factoring that into some of these talking points when we're looking at never EL and ever EL.
Got it, yeah, I guess, and maybe I always wanted, when I, when I think of the never EL, I'm, I'm looking at this group, like, they stand, have the least amount of challenges, right? Or kind of roadblocks in their education. So when I, that will kind of set the, like, when I see that data in comparison, I'll be like, well, are we, you know, even living up to what we need to for, for that? Like, if we don't have challenges? And then, of course, that, that goes all the way down through the rest.
Yes, and I think one way to think about it, and the reason why I haven't included them is that ever EL and never EL make up 100% of our student body. So the all students line is kind of in between the two.
Oh, I see, because then you would have, you're going to have double counting.
Right, this is, well, this is, so not double counting, but ever EL is one half, not one half, it's about 60%, 70%. And then the other 30% are never EL, right? And then all students is somewhere in the middle. So traditionally, what you've seen is the three counterparts, and I'm happy to include these. It does make a seven-line, line chart. But the other three halves of those demographic components are above the all student line.
Okay.
But again, happy to prepare it, happy to send it to you. I can even make two graphs that have them. So you're not looking at seven lines on one graph and trying to parse it all out. Finally, looking at 11th grade, these are looking at the students who are enrolled in AP and/or CTE courses. We do have some students who are choosing to move out. So looking at our all student rate, this has increased up to 74.3%. The target is 85%. So we are making good growth on this. And then it has similarly risen for all of our student groups as well. So this is positive.
Yeah, do you know what, what kind of the initiatives were that made that, that big change happen?
I know that there was a significant push around AP coursework.
Yeah.
We're, we're expanding our CTE offerings. Again, you'll hear about that tonight. And there's really been a lot of very thoughtful and intentional work about offering more AP courses to more students, limiting some of the requirements and not making it kind of lower, eliminating some of the barriers to get into an AP course. So that's really, that has helped move that needle up.
And I would have, is that the counselors who do that? Because they set up the plans with them. So is it like, are they kind of the conduit?
The academic plans and definitely support the students and, you know, developing their schedules. But this has really been work of site administration. They've really, really kind of allocated resources and really reworked the criteria to get into AP to, like I said, eliminate those barriers so more students actually have those opportunities. And they're rising to the challenge, which is what we're seeing.
So Cecilia, didn't we have some of our trustees present about that about a couple of years ago, where they're like, there were some, some switches that the schools did about like when the periods were, like, it was like a whole movement. And so I think that was like a year or so ago.
Yeah, yeah, there, there's, aside from the course offerings, it had, it was some reworking in the scheduling to make sure that students, that classes were happening more or less around the same blocks.
Yes, yes.
And then we've been sending, we've been using our A through G grant money to send teachers, so the AP's courses is college forum. So the basically, college board, they, it is a curriculum that teachers need to be trained on. And you need to send teachers to that. So we've really been trying to up the ante and send more and more teachers over the summer so that we have more people qualified to teach those courses.
So, that's great, see it.
Yeah. And I know there have been some new AP courses also.
Yes, yeah, it's exciting, it's great.
Thank, so in summary, ninth grade passing rates in English and science have remained largely stable. Math has increased a small amount. In 10th grade, about half of our students are on track for A to G based on those academic plans. But it is lower in certain student groups. And then in 11th grade, the rates of students enrolled in AP or courses have risen over the past three years, especially among students with disabilities, which is exciting to see. So what we're going to do next, the dashboard was published on November 13th and is live and accessible on the internet for all of their free time to explore data. It demonstrates the 2024 and 25 school year performance and growth across different metrics, including academics, but also engagement. So chronic absenteeism, graduation date, et cetera, and climate suspension. And then we will be presenting that to you, I believe, at your January board meeting. So I'll be back again. And then we will get new iReady data throughout the year. Our K5 window is about to open up after winter break, so we'll get some new data there. And then of course, grades, course enrollment, and A to G preparedness will be updated. Course enrollment A to G should stay stable for the rest of the year, but the grades will change as semesters progress. That's everything for me.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Any final comments before we move on?
Thanks for accommodating our questions.
Sorry, no comments.
Thank you so much. I know you put a lot of effort into that. Thank you so much. I might have more questions individually about course alignment later, so something I'd love to.
And we can pull some of the prior board presentations around that and the work that went into those working groups around building out those pathways.
Yeah, I remember also the working groups about also like the science course alignment and what was happening.
Yeah, there was alignment around the NGS standards, the Next Gen Standards. And then there was some, some flexibility around what course pathway they would offer. It went through a whole committee process, so, but I can pull all those notes from.
I just remember there was a whole process.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, thank you. I won't pound on that. Would you be willing to share that with the rest of the board?
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay, great. Just thank you so much for that presentation. And just so everyone knows, we're about a little bit behind, but that's okay. Now we're into discussion and action, and the first one is human re, and we will have to have a motion for all of these as a reminder. Human Resources Presentation for the Joint Sunshine Proposal Between Santa Fe City Elementary School and the Secondary School Districts of California School Employee Association for Negotiation and for Support Twenty-Five, Twenty-Six.
Thank you, fourth amendment. So in front of you, you have a request for approval. We are, we will begin negotiations with CSCE, putting the tool of this, this sunshine article on Friday tomorrow, for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. There's an attachment of the Joint Sunshine Proposal of Article Five and Six for Compensation and Benefits. And then we will be submitting proposals to each other on Articles Eight, Seven, and Ten. Article Eight is Leaves, Article Ten is Transfer Promotion, and Article Seven are Hours. So we are requesting approval of this joint sunshine proposal between SRCS and CSCE to begin the twenty-five, twenty-six school year negotiations.
All right, any questions? And if no questions, I would welcome a motion.
A motion to approve.
Second. Okay, moved by trustee Lau, second by trustee De Niva Marsh, all those in favor say aye. That motion passes. Okay, thank you. All right, Education Services, Approval of Articulation Agreement between College of Marin. This is what you were talking about in Santa Fe City Schools, the enrollment. So count one, one, five, twenty, go.
Yes, so we have four Ed Services items, but the first three are all connected. So hopefully you'll hear the through line, but because they're kind of different lanes, we had to present them differently. So the first one is we're seeking approval of the articulation agreement between College of Marin and SRCS to provide dual enrollment offerings to support our education pathways, ROP course. And there will be two courses offered. One is around basically preparing students to, this is about course, education careers, not necessarily teaching. It could be teaching, but it could be other careers that are education-facing. One is just around applying for colleges, supporting students with that. And then the other one is helping students identify internships and jobs that might support them in their future endeavors. And these will be taught by a CTE teacher here in Terre-Linda. So we are seeking support so that we can offer that dual enrollment to our students.
And so will we be approving each one or separately?
Yeah, they'll be separate. This one, too, the students will also earn one unit of CSU credit.
And so can I ask a question? And maybe it's, it's to all three. Will this be only Terre-Linda, but it does say Santa Fe City Schools?
Yes, because Terre-Linda has, this is specific to the ROP Educator's Pathway. This is different than the Teacher Pathway. So this was more Careers in Education Pathway through the Regional Occupational Program, and that's offered at TL. The Educator Pathway is offered at SR.
You're gonna have a line.
So you might want to give an example of an ROP educator-related position.
Well, this, this could be, you may want to go into, say, data systems specific to education. You may want to explore careers in counseling. You may want to explore careers in library sciences in an educational setting. It's not just to go for a teaching credential. Yeah.
Okay, but I think maybe you can understand where I'm going with this.
Yeah, well, and I think that's part of the school of choice we have in high school. So we advertise these, these programs at each site, and, you know, space limitations, staffing limitations, credential limitations. We can't offer the exact same CTE pathways at each school. So we try and like base the offerings on, you know, the school that has either the interest and/or the space and/or the credential teacher, so. We're an open enrollment district, yeah.
They can choose which school.
Yes, yeah.
No, I know that, it's just a perception that continues to build. So that's my comment. All right, I'll take a motion. Anyone have any comments or a motion?
Well, I, I guess my, I, I echo the same concern because when I saw the rationale, I saw that a potential future expansion to Santa Fe High School. I asked myself, why, why are we not offering at the same time? What stopped us from extending it to, or what's the timeline? I guess we addressed some of those, those challenges, which I understand, but I, I do, I do think that is we have one district, you know, these services should be made available. But, and, and if not, I think during the, the enrollment period, you know, we really do need to highlight it so that the, the parents don't find out after the fact. So they actually, these are more signature programs, as you will, kept promoting, and, but you do have these choices, so make sure that they actually make that, those decisions.
Right.
Not finding out after the fact, oh, I don't get to, to do this.
And this is, this is all CTE-funded programs, and that's limited funding. So we could provide less, less options, kind of less selections, and try and standardize. But like one example is SR has the Tiny Homes program, right? We don't have that at TL. TL has a hospitality CTE. So it, it, it is a, we need to, we offered in our course catalog. We've tried to do more advertising around the different programs offering at the different sites. It's not uncommon, there's different pathways, like, I'm a Nevada parent, Samarin has a STEM Institute, Nevada High has the MSA program, right? So it's kind of depending on, if you know, right, a field that you're interested in, you could opt to go to that high school, and we honor that in our, in our high school district.
It's good to know.
Yeah.
I think it would be maybe one day interesting to do an evaluation of gaps at our high schools and benefits both our high schools, just to see what's being offered.
Yeah.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve? Number two, Education Services Approval of Articulation Agreement between College of Marin and Santa Fe City Schools.
Motion to approve.
Moved by trustee Kerner, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
All right, trustee, and do I, would you like me to say both your last names? And I mean this because I say De Niva Marsh, so.
Oh, right, both last names is fine.
Okay, all right, so.
Solidarity.
Okay, Rotis Diaz. Second by trustee, and I'll get better at it, it's my first day. Trustee Rotis Diaz, and all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, that motion passes. Okay, number three, Approval Memorandum of Understanding Between Terre-Linda High School and the Recreation Reimagine for Twenty-Five, Twenty-Six, and Twenty-Six, Twenty-Seven for the CT Education Practicum Hours.
This is related, so as part of that educator Careers in Education courses, students have to do a practicum, and this is basically, we were able to partner with this new group, well, it's a new partnership, I should say, Recreation Reimagine, and that'll offer up to five of our students to do their practicum there after school at a, at a local school site. So because it's student-facing, we wanted to make sure we brought it to the board for approval.
Okay, great, do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Moved by trustee Kerner, second by trustee Lau, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, that passes. All right, number three, Approval Memorandum of Understanding Establishing Collaboration Between Terre-Linda High School and Recreation Reimagine for Twenty-Five, Twenty-Six for CT Education Student Practicum Hours.
That was the one that we just discussed.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, the next one is on the.
Run four, okay.
Yeah.
Oh, no, sorry, Educating Careers Two, CTE Asian Pathways at Terre-Linda High School.
So I think this is getting a little bit closer, trustee Martine. This is a little bit closer to more of the educator pathway, and that's an offering that we're bringing here to Terre-Linda. The way these pathways work is there's kind of an introductory concentrator course, and then there's a capstone course, that's just how CT is laid out. So we'd like to bring these courses for approval. They were approved by the Secondary Curriculum Council at their last meeting, which is composed of teachers, admin, counselors, parents, so that we can basically round out our programming for our students who are interested in careers in education.
Awesome, all right, do I have a motion?
A motion to approve.
Moved by trustee Lau, do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right, second by trustee Rotis Diaz, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, number five. Approval of Memorandum of Understanding between Chris Newton, Music Instructor in Sun Valley School Services from January twenty-six to May twenty-six.
Yes, so this is MOU we're bringing forward for approval. So Sun Valley has gotten in, they've had a challenge working with Youth of Arts. Youth in Arts hasn't been able to find a music instructor for the second half of the school year. So first semester, all of the students are engaged in dance and movement as part of their VAPA programming. And for the second half of the school year, they wanted to offer music offerings for all students. The younger students, we've got a, an instructor for them. We weren't able to find anybody through Youth in Arts to provide music instruction for grades three through five. So similar to what's happened at San Pedro, the, we were able to find this instructor to provide a twelvy program to our third, fourth, and fifth graders so that they can continue to receive instruction alongside their primary grade counterparts. And this will be funded out of the Sun Valley PTO portion with what they contribute towards the VAPA programming.
Okay, any questions? If not, I'll welcome a motion.
Motion to approve.
Moved by trustee De Niva Marsh, do I have a second?
A second.
A second by trustee Lau, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, music program is a green light, okay. Now we go into Resolution Two-Five-Two-Six-Fifteen authorizing the issue of the sale of the Elementary School District election of twenty-twenty-two, General Obligation Bond Series C. Bob.
All right.
All right.
Hey.
I'm gonna talk about the, the, this item and the next two because they're, they're sort of connected in terms of the process. The first one sets up opportunities for the next two.
Okay.
So essentially, this is, we've done this many, many times. This is the third tranche of the Series C for the elementary district to sell those bonds up to eighteen million. I don't remember, in the presentation that Tim and Bill Savage did last week, they talked about splitting that third tranche. And so this is, that's what, that's what this is. It's the resolution to, to get that, you know, to get board approval to go out and sell those bonds, to get that cash flow into the bond program. And anytime that we are selling the next series, whether it's elementary or high school, it's always an opportunity because we've already got our partners like ISM Advisors and Stiefel, who are, and DWK, our Legal Bond Counsel. We've got those folks already working on this sale. It's a good time to look at refinancing previous bond sales. And so they found an opportunity with the twenty fifteen bond to refinance those two while we already have them kind of on the books, and there's like cost savings there. There are, you know, cost savings in terms of scale of work. There's no savings to the district when this happens, but it saves the taxpayers greatly. And for the elementary district to refinance the twenty fifteen, it saves the taxpayers five hundred thousand dollars over the life of that bond. And in the high school, it's a million dollars over the life of that bond. So we, we find those opportunities and we take advantage of those because it's good for our taxpayers, we're stewards of taxpayer dollars. And, and in the past, you know, even though I, we don't know right at the moment what the future is for Santa Fe City Schools and whether we'll go out for more bonds in the future. We don't know that yet, but it's always good to have the optics and be able to back that up with actual cost savings for the taxpayers because they're more likely, hopefully, to support us the next time around.
How do you get, like, that's a great message. How do we get that out to the taxpayers? How do they know you're doing it? Because like, I, I think the assumption is like.
Wait, turn up the mic.
The assumption is like, no one would ever do anything like that for the taxpayers.
They're imposing on Facebook.
But yeah, so.
Talk to all the seniors out there, but this time it's. I know our Director of Communications, Perrino, has developed a news item that will highlight this, and, and then we always try to highlight it when the Citizen Bond Oversight Committee sends out their, you know, their newsletter or their annual update. We highlight it in there, but I think there's more opportunities to get that out there. In the past, I have reached out, because there's a member on the CBOC from COST, the Coalition of Sensible Taxpayers, I always make sure at the meetings that I remind him and I let him know and say, take this back to your group, that we are, you know, yes, we're approving bonds, which they have always supported us, but sometimes they don't, not in every district. But they need to know that we're not just selling the bonds and then forgetting them, that we continue to go back, right, to, to see what we could do for the taxpayers to make it cheaper for them. So that's item sixteen, or six, seven, and eight, I believe, right?
Yes, yeah. So do I?
We need approval on all three of those separately.
All right, I'm gonna go for the approval of six, which is Resolution Two-Five-Two-Six dash fifteen. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve item number six.
Moved by De Niva Marsh, do I have a second?
A second.
A second by trustee Kerner, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
That passes, okay. Resolution Two-Five-Two-Six dash sixteen, do I have a motion?
A motion to approve.
Moved by trustee Kerner, do I have a second?
A second.
Second by trustee Lau, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, now, that motion passes. Okay, business resolution Two-Five-Two-Six dash seventeen. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Move, motion to approve by trustee Kerner, do I have a second?
Second.
A second by trustee De Niva Marsh, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, that passes, all right. Number nine. To the voice.
The night is a big one.
Let's go.
The great man Muhammad Ali once said that service to others is like paying rent for your room here on earth. And we've got some folks here who are paying some rent. We have a total that is over ten thousand dollars tonight. We're gonna start here at Coleman Elementary School, whose PTA has gifted three different items. And if you are a student at the Coleman PTA, you might have water and bars for your emergency backpacks to the tune of nine hundred ninety-five dollars and ninety-two cents.
Whoa.
If you're in kindergarten and you went to the Grossy Pumpkin Patch, you did so because of the generosity of the Coleman PTA at two hundred ninety-three dollars and eight cents.
Nice.
And if you are in first grade, you might have found yourself at the Oakland Zoo. And that was also to the tune of two hundred ninety-three dollars and eight cents. And Laurel Dell Elementary School, moving on, we have some great Santa Fe, former Santa Fe parents, Bridgette and Drew Radachi, who bought a new iPad for the school valued at four hundred fifty dollars. Thank you to the Radachis. Moving down, moving east to San Pedro, we have the Gift of Knowledge, who has given a two hundred fifty dollars for school supplies. I'm assuming that is a, an organization of some kind, look it up, Google it. And we've got a whole slew of things here at Santa Fe High School. If, if, I want you to just imagine, you know, someday a robot that speaks Italian, because that might be possible. Because we have the Italian Community Services of San Francisco, the RITCIO Educational Grant, the Italian Club, five thousand five hundred dollars.
Wow.
Wow. Jason Metter, who gave the Skilled Development Academy one thousand dollars. Rebuilding Together East Bay Network, also known as the Tiny Home Program, gave to the Coding Club five hundred dollars. And then we have three different groups giving to the Robotics Club, the Santa Fe Harbor Rotary, the Marin Sanitary Service, and the Robert, and Robert Gregory Kidd, all gave to the Robotics Club, eight hundred fifty dollars from the Rotary, five hundred from Marin Sanitary, and five hundred from Mr. Robert Gregory Kidd. So, and then we have one more. We have a group called Morgan Healthy Choices LLC, which is sponsoring the Holiday Staff Luncheon to the tune of one thousand dollars. Total donations tonight, twelve thousand, one hundred thirty-two, and eight cents.
Do I have a motion? Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Rotis Diaz, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by trustee Kerner, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, that moves, and guess what, team? It is that time to say this meeting is proposed, and we will see you Tuesday, December sixteenth. All right.